Good evening, everybody. Welcome again. It is the Labor Day holiday and we find ourselves laboring, working. Some people take the day off. It is appropriate, given the crisis, that the Board of Education be working along with the administration to resolve what is undoubtedly and fairly called a crisis respecting our transportation services. But we endeavor, we are working to get that resolved. And without further delay, I would present to you the superintendent for an update on her specific plan to address that crisis. Madam Superintendent?
Good evening, President White, and to all the commissioners, to my team, my staff, as well as those who are viewing on Facebook and on YouTube. I do have an update and would like to let you know where we are relative to transportation for the Rochester City School District. So I have good news. We were able to consolidate all of the buses at a variety of schools to ensure that 100% of the routes for students with disabilities receive transportation. So we shared last night that there were 32 routes that were open. Those have all been covered. I had a conversation with RTS and the conversation was incredibly promising for the new contract with our five schools, which include Edison, Leadership Academy, Northeast, Northwest, and Rochester Early College High School. Additionally, we had meetings with RTA regarding limited and emergency simultaneous learning. We have been meeting and partnering with our union leaders throughout this crisis over the past several days. We appreciate the RTA leadership on this issue and their partnership in helping us to ensure that our scholars receive a high-quality education. Furthermore, today, a robo-call and letter went out to families informing them that we have eliminated transportation for students who participate in the walker bus program and live within 1.5 miles of their school to and from school beginning Thursday, September 9. Additionally, so those numbers are 91 students at School 10, 261 students at School 17, and 232 students at School 22. Additionally, we consolidated buses at All City High School. The shift shifted the end time at Dr. Alice Holloway Young School of Excellence by 30 minutes to consolidate buses. And just another update, Ontario Transportation lost three additional drivers today, but there was no impact on the Rochester City School District. And just a note with that, we are checking regularly with all of our providers to just get the status of drivers. Additionally, as of 4:30 PM, due to the driver shortage, there are 17 unassigned routes impacting eight K-8 schools, which impacts 144 students. At School 8, that equates to eight students. At School 12, that's 19 students. School 23, 18 students. School 29, 16 students. School 35, 16 students. School 39, 18 students. School 46, 16 students. School 52, 16 students. Again, for a total of 144 students. Let's now talk about the transportation that we are able to provide at elementary schools. So you can see, Schools 8 through 7 are reflected on this slide. We have shared with you the number of buses that are allocated to each of those schools, the enrollment at each of those schools, and then how many have access to buses. So I'll just allow you to take a moment to review that information.
What's School 106 in 68 and 53? Which one, what are those schools?
School 106 is RISE. What was your other question?
68?
That should be 58. That is a typo. I apologize. Yeah. Thank you. Then if we want to go to the next set of elementary schools, you can see what that entails. Those schools are noted. Again, the number of buses for each of those schools, the enrollment, as well as how many have access. Now, one of the things that I think is important to share is the fact that you might see, well, why does one school have, you know, the fluctuation and numbers of buses? We have to be mindful of the fact that that number fluctuates anywhere, fluctuates as far as the number of students because we also have students with disabilities on buses. So there are certain requirements there. As we move to secondary schools and the transportation providers, and again, oh, please go back to elementary.
Dr. Myers, Dr. Myers, would you prefer that your colleagues ask questions as you go through the charts or wait till the end?
Could we wait till the end, President White?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you. So if we move to secondary schools that have transportation, again, we listed the schools from All City through Monroe Lower. You can see the enrollment of those schools, the number of riders, the number of buses, and the specific transportation company that provides service to each of those respective schools. Now let's next move to the schools that we discussed last night that don't currently have transportation. You can see that those five schools again are Edison, Leadership Academy for Young Men, Grade 7 through 12, Northeast, 9 through 12, Northwest, 7 through 8, Rochester Early College, 9 through 12. So you can see the total number enrollment and the total number of riders. I know one question might be, okay, so this reflects a different number. We did not, we, this number takes into consideration the fact that there are students receiving specialized busing and/or walkers. So that's why there's the difference. We don't know the number of buses as of yet because these are the routes that would be covered by RTS and this is pending negotiation. So again, as I noted, conversations were very promising and we should have a number. We should be able to finalize by Tuesday, which is tomorrow. So let me just do a sayback. Our involvement in this plan is contingent upon the approval from the RTS or RTA's board. And so the options for these students should we not negotiate, which I'm very confident that we will finalize that. Again, the conversation was promising, but the plan is simultaneous instruction should not RTS work out. Again, I just want to reiterate with our elementary students as well as our elementary students as well as our secondary students, all are welcome to start on the first day of school. Commissioner Vice President Elliott, I do want to go back again. School 68, and I should know this, is Wilson. It's Wilson. That's not a typo. I apologize. Wilson Foundation, which is pre-K-8. So what happens on Tuesday, which is tomorrow? Superintendent's Conference Day goes as scheduled and as planned. The district session begins at 9:30. All district staff are expected to actively participate in the presentations that are being offered centrally. School members at those five schools, again Edison, Leadership, Northeast, Northwest, and Rochester Early College have received an exception and will be provided the video recording that can be viewed at their own leisure. This gives these schools an opportunity to prepare for simultaneous instruction while scholars await transportation. So what happens on Wednesday? Thank you to the Board of Education for allowing us to delay the start of school for one day and approving that via resolution. This affords all of our staff the opportunity to prepare for opening day. Additionally, the district will provide supports for online learning, asynchronous assignments, as well as social emotional support. What happens on Thursday? It is the first day of in-person instruction for all of our students in the Rochester City School District. Students with transportation will begin in-person learning at their school as well as students who can provide their own transportation will be welcomed at their school. And again, I just want to remind everyone that school is available for any student who does not have transportation and we are very excited to welcome them. Students without transportation will be learning remotely on their Chromebooks in Google Classroom. Next steps include the following. We will finalize the RTS contract and our team has been working diligently again today to finalize that component. We will continue to recruit drivers to support the routes that are not covered. Our transportation team will continue to review the consolidation of routes and we additionally will have a community involvement plan. I have to share two important areas of the community. They have already stepped up. One, the city of Rochester is going to be opening for our centers across the city on Wednesday to welcome our scholars should there be childcare issues because of the delay of school one day. And additionally, Conky Cruisers has a priority for our walker buses. So those schools I mentioned earlier of 10, of 17, and 22, that scholars would be able to receive not only a free bicycle but also a helmet. So with that, President White, that's the update relative to how the numbers of elementary schools and students and the number of buses, the secondary schools, and what that looks like, as well as how we plan to support students should they have to participate in remote learning.
Thank you, Superintendent Myers-Mall. I'm going to take questions in a second, but I did want to note that Chancellor, Commissioner, rather, Commissioner Rosa is in the room. And I wanted to, on behalf of the Board of Education, the superintendent, thank her and the entire State Department of Education for their assistance in responding to this crisis. She has been an advocate for this district long before she became Commissioner and her presence here today is consistent with her support for this district. I also want to thank on behalf of the Board, Chancellors Turner and Norwood for their consistent support for this district over many years. And of course, we are forever thankful for the support of our Albany delegation, including those in the Assembly and the Senate. There are indeed many other people who we could spend the next hour thanking for their involvement, not just in addressing this issue, but in all the issues that this urban district faces. And we are continually in appreciation for those efforts. But let's get to the questions. I know Commissioner Powell was first, Commissioner Malloy second, Commissioner Braun, and then Commissioner Adams. Commissioner Powell, wanted to start.
Thank you. On the first, the first question I had was on the slide for school number three. You described a 30-minute change to the start time or bell time. Was this just, was this shifting it from one start? Was this a rebalancing? Was this changing it from one of the start of the three bell times to another of the three bell times in order to balance the load?
It was to help address the load. They had a time and we just shifted that. So we went back to the original bell time.
Okay. And so that allows us to be more efficient?
Correct. It does. It frees up some routes. And our chiefs were in communication with Deb Washington today to make sure that that was clearly known and to make the necessary adjustments and it was minor.
Right. But that does add a burden of getting the word out to those families because they probably only just learned that they were changing start times when we put out the three-tier system, right?
Commissioner Powell, those robo-calls already went out and conversations that happened earlier today.
Okay. My next question is, it's really quite minor. Your slide that described the 17 K through eight schools, some of those are K-sixes, right? We're lumping K-six and K-eight together?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell. Next, we have Commissioner Malloy. Commissioner Malloy?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. And before I get started, everything that I'll be asking or commenting on tonight just is in terms of the recruitment of drivers because we know that's been the fundamental issue here. So first of all, I am really happy to hear the news tonight. And thank you so much, Dr. Myers-Mall, to you and your team for the work that you've been doing for the past 24 hours on this. Much appreciated. I'm just so happy that our kids are going to be back in the classroom five days a week. My own children are beyond ecstatic to see their peers and teachers again. We really do have vibrant school communities across this district. We have really supportive families and caregivers and community partners that make all of this possible. So I really commend our superintendent on ensuring that this happened per board and community request. I'm really happy that we will fulfill this promise to our students and families. Before I get too far into all of this, I really want to wish a happy Labor Day to all of our employees as well as apologize to all of our employees who've been working during a weekend that really should have been set aside to honor, you know, the workers of our nation. I do like to think that I honor our workers, but I feel like we're falling short in this regard in some areas. And we have been for the past 18 months, especially because of the pandemic. So the message we've been giving some of our most vulnerable employees, who've literally been the ones carrying us through this pandemic, are among the lowest-paid members of our community and are the employees who are most likely to live closest to the students and families that they serve. Many of the workers I'm referring to are Vente Union employees. They include our RCSD bus drivers, our cafeteria employees, our security guards, among the many other members. I firmly believe an institution is only as strong as how the workforce is treated by those in power. I understand that our district didn't create a transportation crisis in which we now find ourselves and I'm relieved at what we've been doing to address this crisis. This is a nationwide crisis of bus drivers during the pandemic, but we're also particularly vulnerable in terms of transportation because of our heavy reliance on transporting 31,000 students all over the city, including not just our own 24,000 students, but also those students who attend charter, parochial, and private schools. We, along with most of the other districts throughout Monroe County, contract with private companies to provide these services. And I am so grateful for the long-running contracts that we have with these private companies, including Monroe, Ontario, for Student, and RTS. We wouldn't be able to do it without them. They are experiencing shortages of drivers as well. We addled to a three-tiered system back in early August, so kudos on that. Yet we knew we were still short drivers, not only in RCSD, but also with our contractors through the frequent transportation updates we received throughout the summer from our operations crew. I am so grateful our elected officials helped to step in to assist us in securing further contracts for transportation in this emergency. And I hope most of our students can get transported to school on Thursday. It sounds like we're almost there because we are still short on drivers for some of our schools and we are expecting more driver resignations. So we need to ensure that we aren't just depending on our private contractors. We need to be able to recruit drivers as an organization, just like the private companies do during the state of emergency, so that we can provide stable transportation for our students. And that includes a workforce of RCSD-Vente drivers who can serve as substitute drivers, which I understand we do not really have. At yesterday's meeting, we were reminded that the district was actively creating incentives to recruit more drivers. And in the presentation tonight, we also saw that we are actively recruiting more drivers. You know, I understand that there was a memorandum of agreement offered, our Vente Union offering incentives on par with those that we contract with for transportation. The MOA was evidently pulled yesterday and is no longer on the table at this time. This is really the core of what I'm trying to say. I'd like to know why we are not attempting to recruit employees when, why we say we are recruiting employees, but it doesn't seem that we're offering incentives to recruit. My fear here is that we are avoiding competition with private companies and it seems to me that this is slowly but surely killing our own transportation department, who without the stipulations found, like those found in that MOA, are unable to provide commensurate salaries and incentives to RCSD-unionized employees. It appears to create an unequal playing field that favors the eventual privatization of all public school transport. I view this as a direct attack on our unions and labor. And the people who suffer from all of this are our students. We should be doing everything in our power to recruit drivers. It's critical. Privatization of our children's transport takes the power out of the hands of a public entity and into the hands of a private corporation. Up to 90% of our transportation is reimbursable by the state and we certainly need to change our existing structure wrong-term so that we have less of a dependence on busing students all over to begin with. So what I want to end with is that I implore administration to do whatever is necessary to make our organization competitive. This is precisely the type of cost that COVID funding should be used for. So thank you to our district operations crew and transportation department for your tireless work in making us aware of this crisis. And I'm looking forward to our kids getting back into the classroom as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Malloy. Next, we have Commissioner LeBron.
I won't be giving speeches, but I have lots of questions that I need answers on. So I'm gonna go through a number of questions and then hopefully you can answer some. And those you can't answer at this moment, I don't want them to go into a board question log. I would like to have these questions answered tonight on record. For the walker buses, yesterday was mentioned that there was about 1,000 students. Today, you gave us some numbers that are significantly less than 1,000. But I am interested in understanding the grades and ages for these walkers. I primarily bring this up because some of these schools were some of the schools that we changed bell times to a few weeks ago. And so now some of these schools are going to be ending at four o'clock and it's going to be dark out by four o'clock, especially as we go into the fall and winter in Rochester. And I'm just curious about how far a six-year-old is going to be walking in the dark because we changed the bell times to accommodate a number of other students. So I don't think that this is completely hashed out yet and this is just, you know, my concerns, but certainly the parents who are these kids. I know that we keep using the word like minimum impact, but this is really impactful to our entire community and to all of these families. It's going to be majorly impactful in their lives. The other piece that I do want to talk about.
Commissioner LeBron, could I just respond to that?
No, go ahead because I have other questions.
So our chiefs of schools, as well as Kelly Briggs, who's our Executive Director of Strategic Partnerships, they are working with the principals and there were actually some community meetings that will happen starting as early as tomorrow with the staff and their parents to talk through how to assist those students who will be walking. So we're looking at, you know, the possibility of something similar to like a safe passage to get, to help students to and from school. So that is in the works and we can certainly keep the Board of, the Commissioners up to date relative to what that specifically entails, but that is in the works. Is that?
Okay. I would like an update at least by next week on that because we're starting school on Thursday and then Monday. And it could be dark in a few short weeks. The 17 routes that represented 144 students, are you saying that those are still the students without any transportation at all?
Correct.
And you're still working on figuring out a solution for those students?
Commissioner LeBron, let me respond to that. And I didn't say this and I should. This continues to evolve because a transportation department whom we've lauded and this should be lauded are continuing to work through. and this should be lauded are continuing to work through to see how we might even um make that number or those routes smaller. So they, that could change tomorrow and it could change again on Wednesday. So we continue to figure out how to reduce that number so we can really maximize children being covered with transportation.
And then
So again, we'll provide those updates.
Thank you. And just a follow-up on that question. When can families actually anticipate to have um a a new bus route letter with a more reflective of actual time for pickup and drop off?
Mike, do you mind coming on screen and answering that, please and thank you?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Um apology for my my attire. We're over here at Transportation still trying to work the problem. Um the letters, the letters to the students, the five hundred and eighty-eight students that are um that are of those three schools we've been talking about will be hand-delivered tomorrow um by our by our drivers or our our expeditors or our troubleshooters that are out uh on doing our route practice. The other letters for all the all the students that have um a variety of the changes that we have are are um uh here, going to go to the post office first thing in the morning will be sent out um with the first mail. They'll be in the they'll be in the post office by six AM. The uh the team worked all day today to uh make sure we crafted those letters, had the envelope stuffed, to have everything stamped here and ready to go. So um that's that's uh that's kind of where we are in terms of mailings.
Commissioner LeBron, I just wanted to go back to the thousand. So the three schools represent the uh the the um three schools uh represented the the hundred and something number. But there's seven twenty-seven, which is the one point five mile exception. And so we're combing through those right now. So that's what we're looking through. That makes up the additional number.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for that clarification. And then um you mentioned that the district's going to be providing additional supports for our staff. Um I just would like some clarification on what those supports would actually look like and what did you mean by that? Um I just want to know what that means.
So a few things. So Glenn, if you would come on and take, talk about the technology supports first.
Absolutely. And good evening, everybody. Um we are well-prepared and we have been well-prepared uh for the past year to support our teachers and our students, both in simultaneous instruction or any kind of remote instruction. We've been handing out additional MiFi's throughout the course of the summer to ensure that every student that doesn't have reliable connectivity in their home, even that even if it requires multiple students to have MiFi's to be able to receive one. We still have four thousand MiFi's left in stock to be able to hand out to students in any case of the situation because we know family situations can change week to week or month to month, especially during a pandemic. Um for our teachers, we're going to have office hours available for our teachers uh where they can just pop right in. Um they're going to be um handled by Kathleen Mohan and Ted Delahente. Our instructional technology TOAs will be going to schools where simultaneous instruction is happening to support those teachers um in addition. Um and one step further, we're going to assign a building technician specifically to the buildings uh where the majority of simultaneous instruction is happening, just in case of any technical difficulties they may experience.
Okay, so just one first goal and and then lastly, um and Glenn, you may want to stay on because this is a this is a uh Chromebook conversation. I remember last year we were actually asking our staff to collect the Chromebooks from students. Um and we kept sending those reminders out and there was a little bit of a scramble to have kids come back and bring the Chromebooks. How are we going to ensure that all of the kids who are not receiving transportation actually have their Chromebooks before Thursday?
Good question. Um I'm not sure where the communication potentially uh maybe went a little sideways. We did not collect uh devices without giving another device in its place. Uh we had several thousand Chromebooks uh go out of uh basically go out of service due to the the vintage of them. But we did not take a Chromebook without replacing a Chromebook. However, any new students to the building, any new student to the building as of last Tuesday, I believe, I could be off by a day. It could be last Monday. Any registrant into the building, Chromebooks were shipped to the building for those students. Um if students that are new to the district have a broken Chromebook, they can contact their school and uh the school can fill out a request form and will deliver that Chromebook to the building. However, there may be issues with transportation, so it'll be just like years before myself. Uh parent engagement, all hands on deck, delivering Chromebooks or whatever is needed to the student's home. Um I don't anticipate that to be a very large number, but it's a practice that we've um kind of honed over the course of the past year.
So just for clarification of a student needs a Chromebook because they just registered and they didn't get one. Um even last year, whatever, there's some or it's broken, they would contact their homeschool. And then the homeschool will fill out the paperwork and then we would get them the Chromebook. And then we're going to be doing this in the next forty-eight hours, potentially, because school starts Thursday.
We've already Yes, we've already communicated that into our parent forums and our staff forums and out to the principals. There is a link for them to click on and they basically just fill out a Google form. And wherever that location is where that that is filled out, that's where we deliver the Chromebook to. But again, we're open for getting Chromebooks right into the hands of students, even if it requires us driving it to the home.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna start with questions on the presentation. I have some additional questions um that President White around school reopenings in general. Um so I'm gonna yield the floor at this time. So folks can ask questions around the presentation if you want to call me back. I'll raise my hand again.
I just wanted to add um two additional things. As far as supports, certainly our um chiefs of schools have been working very closely with the principals. They had a meeting not too long ago with them to go through this information. And what was reported back to me is that that was helpful and the principals were appreciative. We also, for the five schools, the Edison Leadership, Northeast, Northwest, and Rochester Early College, the chiefs will be making sure that there are supports. And as Glenn mentioned, those uh technology supports will be provided. And I just wanted Deputy Superintendent Martinez Davis to just briefly share also about uh social emotional supports because that is something that has been noted obviously by our scholars and by our staff as well as the community. So I just wanted for her to to update the board and our community about what that looks like. Melody?
Yeah, absolutely. Good evening, commissioners and our community. First and foremost, we are very excited that our scholars will be returning to our um schools on Thursday. So for our staff, um I want to put a plug. We, our rock restorative team has been working very diligently uh throughout the summer and will continue in the fall, providing professional development opportunities. This summer, we have offered over sixty different types of professional development opportunities to our teachers that they could sign up for on different topics on social emotional learning, including after COVID, how do you set up your classroom? How do you ensure that students feel welcoming into that learning environment? I want to put a plug in that we will have a R C S D staff support circles uh happening on September sixteenth and also on September thirtieth from four thirty to six PM for any of our staff that uh would like to join. We will, uh in addition to that, for our staff, our department will be offering a ten-part S E L series uh on racial equity and anti-racism and specific PD for restorative uh S E L teams at the schools. We are going to be working with principals to ensure that every school has an S E L team that is fully uh supported. We are uh adding to our website constantly resources. We have new lessons, new uh tools in our S E L toolkit that can be found on our website of our student support services website. We have a schmores newsletter that we publish quarterly that has been extremely well-received by our staff that contains videos and resources that staff can use. And this year, we are enhancing that by providing weekly messages, communicating with our staff on S E L tools that they can continue using as they fortify their instruction.
Thank you, Mel. You're muted.
Are you offset? You offset? Thank you, uh Madam Superintendent. Next, we have Commissioner Adams.
Good evening. Um I have one question um and concern. Um I'd like to say thank you to the city for um providing those for our centers. Wednesday, that's a great thing, but I also would like to know if you can collaborate with the city and get us a few crossing guards for those walking buses that you eliminated. Um because that's just basic. Having them walking guards. I know they got things called safe passage and this and that. Them walking guards can can make a difference. And for those schools with the walking weapons, um it it's not large numbers that you need. Um but you definitely need them and I just hope that you can collaborate. I think it's the city that pays those people. Um um if we can collaborate with them once again and get some crossing guards for where we're moving the buses. And that's all I have.
Commissioner Adams, thank you for that. Commissioner Malloy emailed me earlier today about that as well. So that would be something that is in our community plan for next steps. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams. Next, we have Vice President Elliott.
Thank you, uh Mr. President. Um just let me um thank everybody for all of this uh effort. I I know it's been tough. Uh it's been difficult. Um this is a whole different kind of environment. Whole different kind of environment. We'll leave that alone. We'll talk about that another time. Um a whole different um environment um that we've we've just not experienced. You know, we've got a couple of years, you know, in terms of online learning and what have you, but this is, this is new um for us. And so I just want to thank um everybody, you know, the 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 people, our staff. I also want to thank our community. I also want to thank our state partners for this. Uh but but let me also say this, while we want our students in school, and this is not my question, uh while we want our students at school, for me, it's about their safety. And because I understand that in our community, there are disproportionate social ills in our community that puts our community more at risk for COVID. So while we want our kids at school, I really want them to be alive. I do understand that that we all are social beings that need to be connected with each other. I think that I have more of an appreciation of people now than I ever had. Uh so I get that, but I also want our families, I want our students, and I want our staff to live. Um so that's first and foremost for me. Um and so I'll say that to say this. Um you know, dependent on, you know, what happens in the winter with this COVID, we may end up having to go to online learning. I'm hoping that that's not going to be happening um and that we can keep our families and our students sa- and our staff safe. But we got to be real about that as well. Um so um I just want to put that on the table. My question has, do I really have a concern for our walkers? The one, the the ones who we were placing on the bus, who were within the one point five eligibility. And the reason that that's a a um concern for me is, is that because I've got examples of, you know, when we have um one example, a few years ago, the 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 mother lived on Sixth Street but had to take her her two children and a baby in a carriage in the wintertime to school, walk them to School Thirty-Six. So those are the kinds of concerns that I have when when it's within that one point five eligibility. We want to make sure that children were in school. Uh I think I mentioned this last night. My concern would be the F and T rate. And if we are saying, I I don't know how much planning has gone into accommodating these these families who are not eligible to take the bus because of the one point five um eligibility requirement. As such, I do see that we're going to have, I do anticipate that there will be um some attendance issues. And so how, I I I don't need to have that answer tonight, but I do need to make, we need to make sure that if we're not going to give them the transportation, and I understand why, I get all of that. Uh but but how are we going to support our families to make sure that they are, as best as we can, that they're in school? Because if we want them in school um so that um you know, there's not a loss of learning, uh we've got to support those families in some way. Thank you.
Superintendent Myers, do you care to respond to any of that or will you just provide an answer as this situation evolves?
I'd like to provide an initial answer. And again, that's what the community plan um will help us address to really have those wraparound services to support those parents and to support those families um who are not provided transportation at this time. But I just also want to reaffirm my commitment, our commitment to get that addressed and fixed as quickly as possible. But we will follow up as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Vice President Elliott. Commissioner Clark?
Yes, thank you, President White. I too want to thank everyone who's come to the table, the state, the city, everyone who has uh stepped in to help us through this crisis. But I also wanted to reiterate a point that uh that I made last night. While I agree that we need to do everything to protect our Bente workers and our 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 bus driver drivers and grow that pool, we really need to look at the entire pool. We we need to figure out what we need to do to stem driver resignations. Because I, I mean, in the last week, we've had twenty drivers to uh to resign. And it's more than a money issue. It it's a health and safety issue. And what, one of the things that we need to do is we need to be able to provide uh information sessions for all of our bus drivers. We need to provide for our bus drivers and bring in experts in the health profession to talk about safety so that we can begin to stem the fear that our drivers had have. Because right now, I mean, they're talking to one another and and we're getting this explosion of of resignations and retirements. But we need to bring in experts to speak to them about safety, about the precautions we're taking and about the uh the effectiveness of the P P P equipment that we're providing for both them and for the bus monitors. And we also need to require that our contractors do the same thing uh so that we can really begin to get a handle on this. Because while part of it may be a money issue, maybe a salary issue or whatever, uh it appears to me that a major part of this is really the fear of of um of not knowing what the risks are. And and I think the better we educate our transportation workers, the uh more likely we are to retain them and to uh really begin to stem the resignation retirements that we're running into. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. Um I'm looking at the list to see if anybody else. I do have some questions, but I want to make sure I run run through our first run of questions. Doesn't appear that there are any other questions. Madam Superintendent, I'm going to give you sort of a lightning round series of questions. You feel free to answer them briefly. Uh because I know that some may require more in-depth response. The first thing I want to do is join all of my colleagues. I think everyone has spoken of the concern for those walkers, those students that are within that one point five mile uh distance that we previously were providing transportation because we were concerned about their safety, given the neighborhood. Uh I join every one of my colleagues in expressing concern about those students. Uh I join you, Madam Superintendent, in your efforts to collaborate with R P D. I believe those are the people that Commissioner Adams refers to that employs those crossing guards. I would uh I would ask for even a broader effort, um not only city employees, but uh district employees. It, I know we have similar challenges in terms of our sentries, our security guards. But if we could be deploying some of those, one or two of those, that that red van that drives around in those neighborhoods, I think that would be extremely helpful. This uh this plan has to be very detailed because the 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 facts that justify the creation of this particular exemption still exist. These neighborhoods are not safe for young children, night or day. And so we want to make sure that that plan, while you may not present it today, that it does need to be presented in short order because we do not want another tragedy as a consequence of this crisis. Uh sex, second question is, I noticed in your charts, Madam Superintendent, uh that those charts that refer to secondary and elementary school uh to be shortages between or or difference between the the number of students at the particular school and the number of students that were going to be uh that would have access to a ride on a bus. Um very briefly, could you explain to me how you plan on, if I'm, if my assessment was correct, that there was a discrepancy, that there were more students enrolled that were actually going to be riding on the bus? Can you? Can you explain that discrepancy? Is it just the fact that some students just don't ride the bus? Or is it just you don't have the capacity to provide for those students? And if so, what will you do to provide for those students safety and/or transportation?
So if you're referring to this first set of data that I referred to, that had the school number, the number of buses, the enrollment, and then how many access the buses? I just want to make sure that I'm clear. So we have students that their families do provide transportation or they walk. So that's the difference. The only schools that we, as we noted, were, it was seven, eight schools that were not covered. But the charts that we shared with you, those schools, excuse me, are covered with transportation.
All right, so that's an important clarification, because we don't want people looking at that list and saying, the difference indicates that those students will not be able to get to school. That is a reflection of, for example, students who provide their own transportation to their families. All right, so that's a critical understanding. I appreciate you clarifying that. Additionally, I want to join Vice President Elliott, and I'm sure every one of my colleagues that expresses a concern about the ripple effect, the domino effect of these transportation challenges. We have an attendance policy, we have an absentee policy. I indicated in my earlier memo to you today, it would be helpful to have it understood what changes, what accommodations will be made to ensure that students are not held accountable for maybe some early challenges in getting to school. Because obviously, there are still a number of students and families that are going to have to figure their way out. Has the district given some thought or consideration to proposing policy changes to the board or regulatory changes to ensure that students are not punished because they're not able to get to school on time?
Thank you for that question, President White. So as we shared, those scholars who are not able to get to school, they would participate in remote instruction. And so our Office of Attendance, they worked on attendance coding and protocols that range everything from coding students that are present in person, they were present remotely, they were present async, et cetera. So that, we've looked at that, and that would be the, we revised our attendance protocols relative to that. So if a student was learning remotely, they wouldn't be penalized for not coming. But the only way that they would be marked absent is if they either didn't physically come to school or they did not log on.
So if a student is not able to make it to school for whatever reason, you know, the bus came and he missed it, and was not able to get on another line because it was full? We heard Bill Carpenter say, you know, they have a certain capacity for some of these buses. Will there be, and briefly, will there be some allowance? And this would happen, of course, at the building level. Of course, we have principles that can exercise reason and compassion and grace, but I just want to be certain, and I'm sure my colleagues feel the same way, that students won't be penalized if they have legitimate reasons related to transportation challenges for not being able to get to school.
So I just want to revisit what Mr. Carpenter said from RTS. We don't have that issue because we're not giving out the bus passes like was asked of us. So they would come on the route. So certainly, if something happened and if one of Ontario, for a student, Monroe or RTS, so we do have allowances for that if that, if they are late out of their control, right? That it's a transportation issue. So that's what we would follow.
All right, very good. I also asked a question earlier this afternoon about the hotline. It just seems to me, given even the clarity that's been provided today, that there might be some confusion about what is to happen. Have we established a hotline for parents to call or a virtual place, perhaps on our website, rcstdk12.org, where parents can go to get clarity about if they happen to miss this particular board meeting or didn't get the robo-call? Is there a place that they can go to get clarity, a person that they can call?
So their first stop certainly is their school. We also have our chiefs who work directly with the schools. And additionally, we will continue to have a robust presence on our website to update information. Additionally, as I shared a few days ago, I will be conducting regular updates. Every Friday, I will be providing an update, everything from we've hired X amount of new drivers, or we have X amount of routes that are now back up and running because we have addressed that. So that information will come from me every single Friday.
Thank you. I asked a question earlier on today about the financial implications. I'm sure the state, the taxpayers of Monroe County and Rochester want to know, and certainly our independent monitor and every board member want to know what the financial implications are of these massive changes. And I would appreciate if you haven't calculated that just yet, but I think, again, sooner than later, we need to know what impact, if any, this will have on our 21, 22 budget. Do you anticipate having your chief financial officer provide us that information? And if so, when?
The information won't be provided tonight because, as we shared, we still are in negotiations with RTS, so we don't have those updated numbers. But once we do, it's my hope that tomorrow that we will finalize, and we do have a Board of Education meeting to discuss that. What we would have to do is, I've spoken with our chief financial officer, and she would provide, certainly work with myself and other team members, and then we would be able to update the Board of Education with those figures. We just don't have them yet. The contract is not finalized.
Understood.
And the other thing is that we're working, because some of this certainly, we're looking at the use of Cursa funds to address this.
Absolutely. I've gotten countless emails from people about opting out. There are parents, you know, you would think, given the overwhelming conversations we have about having students in their seat, that nobody is interested in remote education. That's just not true. I have gotten countless emails from people who are using the phrase, can I opt out? I don't want my children in the classroom. Briefly, can you tell parents, and can you establish some kind of message that communicates to those parents whether they have the option to opt out or not? Because, trust me, there are a lot of people who are very concerned about this Delta variant, and they don't want their children in school. And they are entitled to hear information about whether they can opt out or not. Can you talk to them for a brief moment and then send out a message later on about whether they, in fact, can opt out?
I can address that question, President White. As a district, as well as other districts, have followed, have used the CDC guidelines, information that has come out of, from the New York State Department of Education, the American Association of Pediatrics. And even given the fact that the Delta variant does impact children, all of those entities have been very clear that it is best to have students learn in an in-person environment. And our governor has even been adamant about that. And so while I recognize that we have families and students, and we addressed this, this question came up a few times when we held our family forum, a family forum a few weeks ago. The only way that we're granting remote instruction is if a student has a medical exemption and that has run through our Health Services Department. The only reason why that we are offering remote is because of the lack of transportation. It is not because of COVID-19. And so while I recognize that parents are concerned, and I don't want to, I certainly take that to heart, and I don't take that lightly, the best place for students to be is in school, in person, and we have worked very diligently to ensure that that happens.
Thank you. I would only ask that that message be put out there such that the parents, these parents and caregivers that are sending me, and I'm sure my colleagues, these messages, make sure they understand the district's position on that. And it makes sense, it's rational, it's sound, but I don't think everybody knows that is not an option. And then finally, Commissioner Malloy made reference to this memorandum of understanding or agreement between Bente and our internal drivers. If you feel it is necessary to respond to that issue or that concern in executive session or with our lawyers, let's do that. But I do think we need to have that, a more thorough response to that particular issue. And you tell me whether you believe, or Steve can tell me whether that's something we have to discuss in executive session, and I'll certainly accept that recommendation.
Well, it's certainly more appropriate in executive session, given that it is, you know, a collective bargaining matter, that we do take those into executive session, so.
All right. So at the end of this meeting, or towards the close of this meeting, we will do that. And I have one other comment. I realize that my colleagues have additional questions, and that relates to just another thanks. I was remiss in not recognizing and thanking the governor's office, for they too have been instrumental in our efforts to address this crisis that has not only affected us, but has affected other districts and schools throughout the state and through the nation. But we appreciate the governor's office. We hope that they are listening in their busy schedules and in their efforts to enjoy Labor Day. We too want to recognize the fact that they put in a great degree of work to get us to where we are today as well. So let's go back to the list, and I have Vice President Elliott first.
Thank you, President White. My question has to do with, have we lost any other drivers today? What's the real-time loss of drivers? Have we lost some today? Or do we anticipate losing some more drivers tomorrow or the remainder of the week?
We reported, we received word that Ontario Transportation lost three drivers, but that has not impacted us. Where this, where our plan is constantly evolving is because there is the potential for additional loss of drivers.
Are we able to, so we'll have to address those issues as we lose drivers? Hopefully, we don't. But we'll have to adjust schedules as, or routes, as we learn of people who may decide to retire or quit in some form or fashion, correct?
Vice President Elliott, should we lose additional drivers? There are two things that will happen. If there's a quick adjustment that we can make, that, again, frees up additional routes, and that's what we're looking at, to almost have some roots in abeyance, if you will. But this is where we would have to work in concert with transportation, notifying our chiefs and our chief academic officer that this particular bus route is now not able to be filled because of a resignation, et cetera. And then the notification would be made specifically to that school and the impacted classrooms.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Commissioner Malloy.
Thank you. I'm very, very concerned about our lack of substitute drivers in the districts. I'm afraid of the ripple effect that this is going to have. It's going to have some pretty serious ones, that's for sure. So what are we doing to effectively recruit our own drivers who could perhaps fill that role? And why are we not offering similar incentives as those from private transportation companies? And again, I understand that this might be something that we need to talk about in executive session, but as far as I know, it's not a collective bargaining unit because it's off the table. Why did we pull the proposed incentives to Bente during a crisis?
Dr. Miller, would you be able to come on screen to address that, please?
Good evening. Thank you, Commissioner. It is important that we recruit and retain, and that we have multiple levers and strategies for how we do that. And certainly, one strategy would be to incentivize how we keep our existing staff and also how we incentivize new drivers and perhaps even substitutes to the district. So it's important that we do that, and we are discussing that.
Let me ask you, Dr. Miller, the detail that you just provided, is there any more detail that would be provided in executive session? Or is that the administration's response to Commissioner Malloy's question? Why aren't we, some in substance, why aren't we doing everything humanly possible to keep these drivers and recruit more drivers? Is there any more detail than what you just provided?
I think we could certainly discuss some details in executive session, but I would also say that the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act, or CERSA, does provide for funding. And we are, we have drafted proposals for that that are being reviewed, and this is something that we do feel is important.
So we will go into executive session after we've finished our business here. Commissioner Lebron?
Yeah, a couple of things. Just as a reminder, the state still has to approve whatever plans we have with CERSA dollars, so I just want to put that on the record for anyone listening. We, even as a board, don't just get to make those approvals for those dollars. So just to put that out there, I am also interested in what long-term solutions will be to our transportation challenges, and I don't think that that's the conversation for tonight. I think a lot of the individuals and families, the thousands of families that are watching, including our staff, are really just interested in what's going to happen Thursday, what's Monday going to look like? Will I have a bus? Will I not have a bus? Will my child be impacted? Will I be notified? But shifting conversations to just school reopenings in general, since all of this has come out, I've heard from a number of parents who have said that they don't have a teacher assigned for their special ed classrooms. I've heard from staff that we don't have Paris for one-on-ones for students who have IEPs. I've heard we have a food service shortages around our school. And so I am interested in a vacancy report by tomorrow on all of the vacancies in the entire district to be presented to the full board so that we have a big picture idea of how many vacancies and what the impact of that is going to be in the district. And I'm concerned that we're not going to be able to, with vacancies and deficits and teachers not assigned yet, and not having the proper one-on-one Paris for our students who have those IEP needs, that how are we going to manage these new recommendations, both from the state and the CDC? And if you saw some of them, you know, if you're unmasked, you have to be six feet. If your mask is three feet, I also want to ensure we're not packing classrooms where they are going to be physically impossible able to have a three-feet social distancing. I brought this up before, that over the summer, I went to some of my schools, I did review their plans, how are you going to handle lunch? Some of our schools are going to be doing lunch from 10:00 a.m. up until dismissal time. That was almost impossible to do, and the amount of staff that it's going to take to do that, and the amount of just transition of students moving, just to have students meet those six-feet requirements in these very small cafeterias, lunchrooms, we're putting them in atrium spaces and hallways to eat. I'm just overall concerned, I just want to put it on the record, I don't think that we're ready, but we are going to be moving forward. So I need to understand how are we managing all these other things on top of this transportation crisis?
Commissioner Lebron, you mentioned that last night, and we were prepared to present that update tomorrow at our regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay, and you're going to present a vacancy report as well to us?
Christopher will have that available.
Okay, thank you. And with that report, I'd also like to know the schools that would be impacted. Thank you.
Commissioner Malloy, I believe, had another question?
Thank you. I did want to just highlight one thing that the district has been doing, and wanted to compliment Dr. Myers-Small and the administration for just the partnership that you have with shifddiff.com to try to recruit drivers. So I meant to highlight that, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Malloy. I'm looking through the list, and I do, oh, that Chris Malloy, I assume that's an old digital, virtual hand. So I think we are.
Seasoned.
Seasoned, seasoned hand. Thank you, Superintendent Myers-Small, for that reminder. Okay, that puts us in a position to discuss the fact that, remind ourselves that we are going to be meeting tomorrow. Our clerk, what time is that meeting tomorrow?
Our meeting tomorrow is at 5:30. We'll be convening the HR committee of the whole, and the bulk of the meeting will be dedicated to the transportation update, but the board will consider a few resolutions beforehand.
And that meeting is in-person, is that correct?
Correct. In-person, in Central Office, Conference Room 3A.
131 West Broad Street. There are limitations, just so that people know, there are limitations with respect to the number of people that can be in attendance on a third floor, is that right?
That is correct. The room limit is 20 persons. First come, first served, of course. Priority is given to those who have signed up to speak. So if you are signing up to speak, you may do so by calling or emailing the board office. You may do so at boardofeducation@rcstdk12.org by noon of the day of the meeting to sign up to speak. And you may And you may sign up to speak either in-person or virtually, though. So if you don't want to take up space in the room, or if you prefer to attend from a distance because of COVID or other reasons, you can request a Zoom link to attend and speak virtually. If you aren't intending to attend, you must check in with the front desk to get COVID screened, and then you will be escorted to the conference room. Again, 20 persons in attendance at that time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Superintendent, could you just very briefly describe for your colleagues and for the folks that are watching, what will be on the agenda tomorrow? What items will you be presenting tomorrow? I assume a number of them obviously relate to the resolution of this transportation issue.
Correct. So the RTS resolution. We also will be discussing our preparedness for reopening, including also talking about staffing and staffing vacancies by school, by school.
And also, if memory serves, we will, you will probably have a report from Bill Carpenter and RGRTA as to what their Board of Trustees decided on the negotiations. I believe they were meeting at 12 o'clock tomorrow, is that right?
Correct.
So we'll, for those schools, those five schools that you repeatedly mentioned, we'll have hopefully some resolution with respect, definitive resolution with respect to those five high schools, is that right?
Correct.
All right, perfect. I did want to know before we, go ahead.
I did have my hand up, but go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, 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 go ahead, go ahead.
I just wanted to reiterate our excitement as a team that we are welcoming many scholars back to the Rochester City School District in person. I'm excited, our team is excited, our principals are excited, our staff are excited, our teachers are excited. So we are looking forward to that. I also just want to reaffirm my commitment to continually evaluate our process and to make sure that we continue to implement what's working and to adjust if we need to make appropriate adjustments. And I also am committed to ensuring that we keep the community updated through varied mediums to ensure that they are aware of where we are and our progress to addressing this situation. I also want to uplift many individuals who work together to enable us to get to this point today so that we can welcome our scholars back. And so we are excited, cannot wait, look forward to engaging with staff tomorrow for Superintendent's Conference Day. And just finally, I want to thank the Board of Education for their support, for your questions, for your feedback. But most importantly, we are so excited that we will be welcoming scholars back.
Dan, my hand is up, just a quick heads up.
Yes, go ahead, I saw it, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer Small. We're really excited. I know my own children are just ecstatic. I just want to, not to belabor the point, but I need some clarification just about executive session. I just want to know how my question met the criteria for executive session. I need that explained, so perhaps our acting general counsel can explain exactly how my particular question met.
A incentive for a particular bargaining unit needs to be negotiated with that bargaining unit. And the details as to why a particular item was advanced or not advanced, or any change that may be made to it, need to be done in an executive session so as to preserve the district's ability to negotiate.
Are we currently negotiating with them, though?
If we are going to attempt to talk about the incentive, it would have to be in negotiations, yes. I mean, there's no question this is subject to executive session.
Right, but are we currently?
Well, if your question is that there was an incentive on the table, and you want to know why it might or may not be pulled off the table, that is a subject of negotiations.
But if it's off the table, then it's kind of moot, isn't it? I'm just trying to educate myself.
Even if, even if your question is, why don't we put one back on the table? That's still subject to negoti, that's, everything is about negotiations. It should go into executive session. We don't talk about potential incentives for any bargaining unit in open session. It's just not, it's not appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Carling, I appreciate that. Thank you, Commissioner Malloy. And we will go into executive session shortly. I did notice that, and I might be wrong in assuming what her intentions were, but I did notice that our commissioner, New York State Commissioner Rosa, has put the video on. And I wanted to make sure that if she wanted to make a comment or two, that she, of course, understands that, like any citizen, she's free to do that. Commissioner Rosa, would you like to say a word or two?
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity. And just so you know, I did listen in yesterday. I selected to be in-person today. I do have to say that the entire team has been keeping me informed on the various topics, the various issues, giving me up to, I would say, up to the minute reports on how they're moving forward. And my hope is that collectively, not only the board, obviously all the commissioners, the community, not only responds, but understands that this is a collective effort to get our kids back in school. And that is the core mission of all of you and the superintendent. And I do believe that working together with elected officials, with the governor's office, with our department, we will get to a better place. And I also would be remiss if I also didn't mention our monitor. So collectively, I think we get to a better place than when we travel in a loner space. So thank you for the opportunity to be with you today and listen, as I did yesterday, but also to be part of the journey and part of the solution. And as always, I'm always with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rosa. We know that you are always with us. I often describe it as in the carpool lane. We will not get to where we need to be unless we are riding together. And in that regard, before we go and I get a motion for executive session, I just wanted to remind folks that on September the 8th, that's this Wednesday, at First Genesis Baptist Church, that's 292 Joseph Avenue in the city of Rochester, at 6:30 p.m. in reference to Commissioner Rosa's call for the community collaborative effort, area ministers and community leaders are getting together with a specific agenda on that path forward. And the agenda includes giving district officials an opportunity to update the community on its transportation plans and what it plans to do for the start of the new school year. Secondly, providing through representatives of bus companies, including RGRTA, First Student and Monroe in Ontario, invitations have been sent to them as well, for them to provide a detailed description of opportunities within the transportation industry for school bus drivers and what qualifications are needed to enter that field. Now, Commissioner Malloy did mention, there's exciting news that you don't, you're not even hearing about. Amarette Miller, many of you know her, with, I think it's called ShiftDif, have already gotten 75 people who are interested in applying to become bus drivers, 75 people, folks. Now, there is an extensive process that they have to go through. And one of the things that I said to the superintendent in my earlier messages, as Commissioner Rosa said, we need to work with state officials to make sure we streamline the CDL process and the certification process for school bus drivers and for security clearances. But that is part of the agenda. Item number three is affording citizens with appropriate licenses and DMV endorsements, because you have to have an endorsement to be a school bus driver, not just a CDL license, to apply for these jobs at the church real-time. Additionally, we want to afford citizen groups and groups a platform to share their grassroots efforts to mobilize transportation to and from school for Rochester City School District students who are not eligible or who will not have a ride on a bus, including carpooling. And finally, I'm adding this to the agenda, given what I think Commissioner Adams said, Mr. Elliott said, Mr. Malloy said, Mr. Lebron, and I know Commissioner Powell and Clark would agree as well, that we need to shore down the arrangements for making sure our children, particularly in the schools 10, 17, and 22, often referred to as the Crescent, to make sure that those students have safe passage. And that requires that the community mobilize. It's not just police, it's not just crossing guards. But perhaps at this meeting, again, on September the 8th, Wednesday at 6:30, we can get citizens to agree to volunteer to watch those streets as those children make their way to school. So again, September the 8th, this Wednesday, 6:30, 292 Joseph Avenue, that's First Genesis Baptist Church. We want to thank Pastor Johnson and all those folks who will be there in attendance. Finally, let me take a look at the list to make sure there's been no additional, Commissioner Lebron.
Yeah, I just want to ask for clarification, like if this is a district event. And then also, I know you mentioned some community efforts, and I've said this on my own personal page as well, that I certainly appreciate that the community is doing a collective, lots of grassroots efforts, but I also wanted to ask legal about any of the liabilities. Like if I started promoting it as a commissioner, I can assure that there are some safety precautions and, you know, background checks. Like what is the liability to myself? And I don't know if this is a question you can answer in the public, or if it has to go into executive to see. But I did have questions around that. And then also, Dan, if you can answer whether this is a district-sponsored event that you're talking about right now?
This is a community-sponsored event, of which I'm a member of the community. So it's not a district-sponsored event, and I'm glad to say it's not a district-sponsored event. But I am a member of the community, along with a lot of other people. And in terms of, let's say, someone decides to carpool, what, again, we can call on general counsel to answer this, but really is no need, because it would be an independent effort, totally unconnected to the district. I've often said, this is a crisis, and there's no need to waste an important crisis and not galvanize the community. That's what the citizens of Montgomery did in 1955. They galvanized their bikes, and we're already hearing about cocking cruisers, and no one is suggesting that we should turn back Nurse Bowitz's generous offer to organize bikes and make them available. So this, I think, is a good thing. It's a community meeting where people are being brought in to hear what the school district is doing. That's the most important reason. What is the school district doing to get their kids to school on time? And also, but more, equally importantly, telling them what their opportunities are as employees, as bus drivers, what their requirements are. It is also telling them, hey, listen, if you want to organize something, you can, and you need to make it available to citizens. But, Mr. Carling, do you want to add anything to the fact that I have described this inequitably so as a community-based meeting where we're asking citizens to become involved in the solution to this problem?
Yeah, I mean, certainly, it's not a district-sponsored event, it's not a district sanctioned. It's something that the district certainly appreciates. Any private citizen looking to help the kids is great. No individual board member can make it a district-sponsored event. That's an important thing to know. It would have to take a vote of four of you in order for it to become a district event, which would then impose the, you know, kind of the official seal of the district on something. So, you know, to the extent that any of you are part of things like that, and you want to encourage people to get out there and help, there's no harm in it. Again, if the district was to attempt a contract with some of these groups, we would have all the background check and liability issues that go along with it. But, you know, and any one of you, it's, you are also citizens in addition to being board members, and that's okay to be part of the community at most times.
Thank you, Steve. I did want to ask, I was going to reach out anyway about the liability, but that definitely clarified. Personally, I'm always a little nervous and want to be more on the cautious side, just to have some foresight that if something were to go wrong and I was promoting it, that someone may have mistaken that as Commissioner Lebron versus community member Beatrice Lebron. So I just want to be clear about that.
Just as Steve has indicated, we are.
We wouldn't get sued, but we have a good case.
As Steve has said, thankfully, thankfully, none of us lose our right to participate in democracy outside 131 West Broad Street. And all of us, without exception, I know all of us do that. And so I am doing that along with, I hope, countless other citizens. Because as Commissioner Rosa has said, this is going to have to be a broad-based solution, and it can't just be short-term. Largely, what we've talked about are short-term solutions. A number of people have said, including Commissioner Rosa, that we have to look at long-term solutions to our transportation issues. And the citizens of this community, employees and organizers, have to be a part of that long-term solution. All right, let me look at the list to make sure that there are no further comments or questions, and there aren't. So all I need is a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing a contractual matter that may be subject to negotiations. Is there a motion? I think I heard Commissioner Malloy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President. It's been moved and seconded that we go into executive session. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? Seems like the ayes have it. Ladies and gentlemen that are watching, I would say to you, we will have no business coming out of executive session but to adjourn. And so we appreciate you showing up tonight, and ask that you tune in tomorrow to see our additional meeting, which again, Madam Clerk, is at 6:00 or 6:30?
It is at 5:30.
5:30, thank you very much. All right, on behalf of the Board of Education, again, thank you for watching tonight, and thank you for your support for our efforts. Tom, tell.